Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, March 4th, 2024 City Council Meeting. 6:00 PM in City Council Chambers 111 East Maple. Our invocation this evening will be given by Muriel Ludeman of Independence Alive and Well. Please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our dear Father in heaven, when you brought forth all creation, you called everything you made good. You made man in your creative image and allowed us to partner with you through the creative process and bring forth the kingdom of heaven to earth. We are weak and we find ourselves in a deep mess and we cry out to you as we grieve the loss of two more of our city servant friends. Please hear our cries for guidance this night and resolution. May we slow down enough, be still enough, and take time enough to listen to hear your voice. In the blessed and sacred name of Jesus Christ, I offer this prayer of blessing upon all those gathered here to do the business of this great city. It is great because of your manifest blessing upon it. It is great because of the purposes and visions you have for it and because you brought her citizens from all parts of the nation and globe to dwell here and bring their faith, knowledge, wisdom, and desire to love you and love their neighbors to do this kingdom-building work. May we connect our hearts and spirits with yours, Father, to bless this city with peace, grace, joy, and loving kindness for all of her people, your people. Show us what your vision is step by step and may we follow it, Father, and so that it may be achieved to your glory. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
In a moment, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance, but after the Pledge of Allegiance, if you could, please remain standing for a moment of silence for Officer Cody Allen and Circuit Court Processor Drexel Mack. So please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and then we'll do a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. If I could take a moment of personal privilege from my colleagues. On behalf of my esteemed colleagues on the City Council and our city staff, it is with immense sadness and heavy hearts that we pause to remember Officer Cody Allen and Circuit Court Processor Drexel Mack. Officer Allen, a beacon of bravery and dedication in our police force, he leaves an unfulfilled void within our community. His unwavering commitment to protecting and serving our residents will forever be etched in our memories. On behalf of this City Council, I extend our deepest condolences, an unwavering support for Officer Allen's wife, his young children, his parents, and the Independence Police Department, both sworn and civilian personnel during this unimaginable time of loss. Their grief is profound and we stand with them in solidarity. This tragedy serves as a stark reminder of the immense sacrifice made by all public safety personnel who courageously put themselves in harm's way every day. Today, we mourn the sacrifice and hold Officer Allen and Mr. Mack in our highest regard for their dedication and service to our community. While Drexel Mack didn't work in our city or work for our city, he worked in our city. He was doing his job to enforce the laws of the 16th Judicial Circuit and ensure that law and order happened within our community. His sacrifice should not be forgotten. May Officer Allen and Mr. Mack rest in everlasting peace and may their legacies continue to inspire all of us to serve each other. This tragedy has deeply impacted our community. In the coming days, we will be working diligently to ensure appropriate support and resources are available to all those affected. We will hold a public visitation this Thursday from 4:00 to 8:00 PM and a memorial service at 11:00 AM on Friday, both at the Community of Christ Auditorium, to commemorate the life and service of Officer Allen. It is our understanding that arrangements are being finalized for Mr. Mack and we will support those events as appropriate. Please keep all of our public servants in your thoughts and prayers during this difficult time. Thank Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
McCandless?
Here.
Hobart?
Here.
Mayor Rowland?
Here. Thank you. Could I entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow non-residents to speak?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. We will move to citizens' request. Roy Musset is first to join us. Roy, come forward, please, and state your name and address, and you have five minutes to speak. Mr. Musset.
My name is Roy Musset. I'm sorry, folks, if I sound too loud.
You're fine.
Eighty percent loss of hearing, okay? What I'm trying to do is, I've been to a few City Council meetings in Eastern Jackson County, and it's been brought to my attention that the biggest majority of the cities in Eastern Jackson County wants to secede away from Jackson County. Not sure exactly how we have to start doing it, but there's a group of us that's trying to, wanting to secede away from it. We want to change the name from Jackson County, let Kansas City have Jackson County. We want to call it Truman County. And we'd like to do is, with your guys' blessing, we want a seat right here in Independence. We want to take over all the county buildings because it belongs to Jackson County. My understanding is, there is no county meetings held here in Independence anymore. It's all downtown. You got to pay a fortune to park down there. And then you can't even hardly get into the building. So it's just, it's a request. And I believe I gave the young lady my phone number and everything, so if you guys decide, and then I'll let you know. I've been to some others, and that's what happened, is they want to secede away from it. But we need to get Eastern Jackson County on board and then try to go forward with it, okay? I appreciate your help.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Musset. Next up is George Powers. George Powers, come on up, and you have five minutes, Mr. Powers.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name's George Powers. I live at 24626 East Truman Road here in Independence. And I'm here to talk with you about trying to vacate Coon Road, which is on the first reading of an agenda tonight. I own property that has frontage on Coon Road. If you vacate that, I no longer have access to my property on Coon Road. And of course, access is of value. I've got a 10-acre flag lot, and on Coon Road, it comes in from the bottom side. I have access on Truman Road from the top side. But again, with 10 acres, with the access, I could very possibly subdivide that 10 acres. So if you vacate the property or you vacate the road, that would stop me from being able to subdivide. So I'm here asking you, first off, not to allow that to happen. Talking with the individual who wants to vacate it, he talks about the fact that the city's not maintaining the road. Well, if we vacated every road that the city hasn't maintained, we'd have a lot of issues. Again, and I don't know if he's ever contacted the city in regards to asking them to come in and fix the road. He also talks about vagrants coming down and parking down the dead-end road. And again, if we vacated every road that vagrants were on, we would have an issue. Again, what I'm talking about is not taking value away from my property by vacating the road. I have another neighbor who I talked with who has no frontage, but if I was to bring in Coon Road and lengthen it, she would have frontage. She owns 80 acres in that particular area, and she is absolutely opposed to it. Her name is Frances Heeman, lived there for 45 years in the neighborhood. I've lived there for 30, roughly 30 years. So I would like for you to think about, like I said, the value that would be taken from me by the city vacating the road. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Sabrina Mitchell. And Sabrina, you have five minutes, please.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for letting me speak. I didn't know that I was coming until today, so I jot some things down. It's about the vagrants on my property. I am fed up and frustrated, and I'm not looking for an answer today, but I want to make everyone aware. This might not be my first trip here, I understand. I need to know, what else can I do? I have email communication with the police, and that particular group of the police that's taking my emails with my photos, they have been responsive and polite, so I have no issue with the police. I have an MOU on file for over five years now. I've never been called in for anything on there. There have been numerous calls to 911. There have been fires. When they pull out the fire trucks, that's very expensive every time they pull them out. And these people that are on my property are not down on their luck homeless. They are hobos and druggies. They leave behind trash, a lot of trash, heavy trash, and cleanup for that trash is considered a biohazard because of what they do in the woods on my property. They are being supplied food and drink, and then the containers become trash on my property. It is irresponsible to feed any child, adult, or pet without concern for the waste. And I'm left with the waste on my property. So again, I'll close by saying, what else can I do? Thank you.
Next up is Tony Summer. And Tony, you have five minutes.
All right. Thank you. My name is Tony Summer, 220 West Mill Street. Today, I want to speak about the charter, but first, I want to acknowledge the sacrifice Cody Allen and Drexel Mack made while serving our community. They and their families will be in our thoughts as we continue to work to improve our city. For the charter, the Charter Commission and a few of the council members have done a lot of really good work around this. And I think that there will be, while there will be some controversial items, we have a really good document that's heading in the right direction. I wanted to make a small suggestion today, though. One of the changes the council made from the commission's recommendations was to shorten the beginning of the document to get across the same point while making it briefer and easier to read because it was quite a long introduction. So this was a really good change, but I think in the process, an important part of that lengthy introduction got left out. The original recommendations would have required the city to engage with the community in its full diversity. Most of us agree that this is an area where the city could really improve. Twenty-eight percent of the city is not white. Half, of course, are women. Half of the population is under 40 years old. Twenty-five percent of households do not live in a single-family home. Thirty-seven percent rent. Six percent speak a language other than English in the home, with 28% of those speaking English less than very well. Fifteen percent live below the poverty level, and 6.7% do not own a car. When you look at our city leaders, the other people in this room, and the civic leaders who influence decision-making, is this what they look like? The honest answer is no. Most of those groups I listed are severely underrepresented in this civic process. That's why it's important for us to maintain the mandate from the original proposal from the Charter Commission for the city to engage the community in its full diversity. This can be done without having to sacrifice the conciseness that the council members achieved here, as it is relatively simple to include this mandate in a single sentence. So I implore the council to make this change to the proposed charter at the next opportunity. Thank you.
That then brings us... And next, we have the proclamation for the I-STAR Award. And I wanted to talk a bit about Holly Allerson. Holly's been a city employee for 10 years and the neighborhood services supervisor in the Community Development Department for two years. One of Holly's traits is being proactive in solving code enforcement issues in Independence. Holly has planned and supervised many code enforcement sweeps in Independence that have made real differences in our neighborhood, in the city. A second trait that she has is her ability to work with residents and staff to resolve issues. Holly works with the code enforcement officers to find solutions that are fair to citizens and fair to the community. Whether it's given a senior citizen needed time to resolve an issue or acting, quickly resolve those issues that have endangered the health and safety of our citizens, she has worked diligently to make sure that is carried out. A third trait of Holly is her leadership. It is said that a true leader never asks anyone to do something that they will not do themselves. Holly has stood behind this work ethic. Holly meets with citizens after hours and on weekends to hear the concerns of the residents and work with them to find solutions on difficult problems. She also goes the extra mile. Holly is very dedicated to the staff and the citizens of Independence, and she is the epitome of a team player. One specific example of that is on a recent Sunday, Holly took the time to meet with neighborhoods in the Southwest Independence to hear their concerns and to work with them to find a solution for a neighborhood concern. And I have to compliment you, Holly, on going the extra mile to do that. I think that's terrific. So with that, if you had come forward, and I know Mr. Walker has your I-STAR Award, and please come forward, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to...
We need to vote on that.
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Kovar.
I'd move to approve the resolution recognizing Holly Allerson of the Community Development Department as the I-STAR Award recipient for March 2024.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. With that, that'll bring us to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Thank you. We've got a motion. Are there any council members who would like to pull the items for separate consideration?
One second.
Oh, please give me a second. We've got a second here, so we've got the motion and a second. Any items that want to be pulled? Councilmember?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item number one in Resolution 24713.
Okay. So we're going to pull item number one and item number 24713. Perfect. Okay? Any other items to be pulled for consideration? Okay. Let's approve the consent agenda minus item number one and item 24713. And if there's no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the consent agenda items, minus the two items that were pulled, has in fact been approved. Councilmember, please proceed with item number one, please.
First, I move approval of item number one.
Second.
Thank you.
I had just some very minor modifications to the minutes from February 7th and February 26th. The city clerk has a copy of those, so anybody is welcome to come up and take a look at those. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. We've got a motion and a second on the floor on item number one. If there's no other further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And item number one is passed. Five in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 24713. Madam City Clerk, or excuse me, Madam Councilmember, please proceed.
First, I move that we approve 24713.
Thank you.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Please proceed.
Thank you. To inquire of the city manager?
Please proceed.
So, Mr. City Manager, I know we discussed this at a study session, but not everybody watches those, and I just wondered if you could tell me what follow-up comes from this resolution?
Yeah, we would be happy to do so. And just as a quick reminder, this was the resolution that was requested and sponsored by Councilmember McCandless, really requesting that MoDOT ensure that all of their traffic signals, traffic signs, et cetera, along the state-maintained right-of-way is in good working order and good form, both from a safety perspective but also for aesthetics in the community. With approval of this resolution tonight, city staff would append a letter under the signature of the mayor and council that we would send along with the resolution, letting MoDOT know the action that the city council has taken, and then request maybe what their follow-up plan would be thereafter to ensure the provisions of the resolution are satisfied.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'd hate to miss out on some of Councilmember McCandless's hard work if she would enlighten us as to how many of those signals or traffic signs are not in working order.
So Councilmember Hobart's giving me a hard time because I drive around the city and count how many one-way signs and yield signs and other traffic signs are down. At my last count, there were 40 on our state-maintained highways, so thank you.
It's a hard time, but it's a legitimate time, actually, though, because it's a real service, actually, she's doing for us, and I very much actually appreciate that because those are actual safety concerns. So thank you, actually, very much, Councilmember. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Councilmember, thank you for bringing this forward. Any further discussion on this item before we vote on it? Okay. With seeing no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on 24713, please.
Fears?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 24713 is approved. Five in favor, zero opposed. This will bring us to our regular agenda, and we'll open a public hearing. And Madam City Clerk, please proceed on the public hearing announcement.
A public hearing for the application by Henry Downing requesting a rezoning from R30/PUD High Density Residential/Planned Unit Development and R12 Two-Family Residential to R6 Single Family Residential for the property located at 625 North Lakeview Avenue. New information only.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Rick Arroyo. I'm the Assistant Community Development Director here at the city. This rezoning was considered by Planning Commission on January 23rd of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this rezoning. This is a single-family home at 625 North Lakeview Avenue. Currently, it has two zonings, an R30 and an R12. The property owner does wish to be able to take out a loan on this property and therefore requesting the R6 zoning. I have no new information to provide.
Any questions or discussion for Mr. Arroyo? Thank you, Mr. Arroyo. We'll close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, can you please read Ordinance 24009, please?
24009, second reading, and ordinance approving a rezoning from District R12 Two-Family Residential and R30/PUD High Density Residential to District R6 Single Family Residential for property at 625 North Lakeview Avenue. Second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
If I might address the city manager who...
Please.
If I might address Mr. Arroyo, Mr. Walker.
That would be excellent.
Thank you. Mr. Arroyo, the current owner, are they currently, what's that property currently being used for?
So currently, it is a single-family home, and the structure itself, they want to be able to take out a loan on it to do some improvements on it. And then they're also potentially in the future hoping to, by the R6 rezoning, break that up into maybe a new plat to break up so they can do additional single-family lots on that property.
How big is, do you know how big the lot is off the top?
Let me take a look here real quick, if you...
Or...
It's a little over half an acre.
How many single-family homes?
They could probably put three. It looks like maybe more than likely two, but it's possible that they could probably put three. It really depends on the road frontage.
In that case, would they tear down the existing house?
They may need to, depending upon how they would separate out those lots, because that, one of the houses is actually very close to where they might need to do a property line adjustment. It is also possible that they could get a ward of adjustment to adjust the setback or something, but they may have to if they wanted to break it up into anything more than two, possibly three lots.
Gotcha. But it's not currently being used as a rental or anything like that?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Any other, do you know how long they've owned it?
Let me see if I have that. Uh, let me see if I have that. I don't have an exact date, but I think it's fairly recent, since I've been trying to get this loan recently on it.
So, maybe they're gonna take out a loan and then try to redevelop the property?
Yes, that would be my guess.
Okay. Well, so long as they're not, and otherwise, it's in code compliant?
Yes, as of right now.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else, other questions or comments? Okay. Madam City Clerk, can you please call the roll on 24009?
Fears?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 24009 passes, five in favor, zero opposed. This brings us to another public hearing. We'll open up the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
A public hearing for the application by Marvin Mendoza requesting a rezoning from R-18/PUD High Density Residential/Planned Unit Development to R-6 Single Family Residential for the property located at 1220 Dickinson Road. New information only.
Thank you again. This rezoning was also considered on Planning Commission on the January 23rd meeting. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this rezoning. This is actually a pretty large lot at 1220 Dickinson Road. There is a single-family house on there that I guess is in need of significant repair. The owner is wishing to get a loan to be able to renovate that. Currently, the property is R-18 PUD, and they wish to get it rezoned to R-6. In this case, I don't, there is no information as far as them wanting to add any additional lots to it. I think they just want to keep the single lot, or the single house. I have no new information to provide.
Thank you. That'll close the public hearing. And Madam City Clerk, please read 24010, please.
24-010, second reading, and ordinance approving a rezoning from District R-18/PUD Moderate Density Residential to District R-6 Single Family Residential for the property at 1220 North Dickinson Road, second reading.
Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 24010 passes, five in favor, zero opposed. This brings us to another public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. Please proceed.
A public hearing for the application by Chris Chancellor requesting a rezoning from PB/PUD Business Park/Planned Unit Development and C-2 General Commercial to I-1 Industrial for the property located at M-78 Highway and Little Blue Parkway. New information only.
Thank you again. This rezoning was considered by Planning Commission also on the January 23rd meeting. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this rezoning. This is a property that's south of M-78 Highway. It's north of Truman Road, that curved area, and it's east of Little Blue Parkway. It's part of the North Point development site. The intent here is to relocate one of their industrial buildings across the Parkway with the commercial lots closer to 78 Highway. It's essentially flipping one of the buildings from what was originally approved back in the night, in the 2022 development plan. I have no new information to provide.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please read 24011.
24-011, second reading, and ordinance approving a rezoning from District BP/PUD Business Park/Planned Unit Development and District C-2/PUD General Commercial/Planned Unit Development to District I-1 Industrial for the property at the southeast corner of M-78 Highway and Little Blue Parkway.
Thank you.
Second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on 24011? Please proceed.
To inquire of the city manager?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, do you think that this will increase any costs for the city for infrastructure to be able to make this modification?
That's a fair question. No, I do not believe that this will have any adverse fiscal impact to the city.
Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Please proceed.
If I may-
Please proceed.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, it's my understanding that this building is moving from the west side of Little Blue Parkway to the east side. Is that, is that in fact then further away from housing, or houses than it was?
Yes, that would be moving those, pardon me, at least from the established subdivision that's out there now. Of course, there are some homes located higher up elevation, but those are, again, elevated above this and set back, but as far as the established subdivision, yes, this would be taking those further from, from those homes in those areas.
Well, and, and this building is just in line with the other buildings that are on that side of the road?
Very much in keeping with those.
Okay. Does this, does this affect any of the other green space or any of that other sort of things that were concerns or talked about?
No, this has been, again, thoughtfully contemplated along with the concerns that were originally shared when the project was proposed, and, and no adverse impact to the, some of the natural habitats that are located out there and were of concern to some of the residents and citizens who commented on the original proposal. Those are still contemplated and considered and included in this adjustment.
Do we know what the reason for the change is?
I might defer to Mr. Arroyo if he has any more information on that, based on the application.
So per the applicant, really the desire is to get this to more lineup with the existing commercial, as you mentioned earlier, on the opposite side of the road. As far as the green space and the Florida area ratio, most of that's very much the same. You actually see a little bit more of the detention pond areas on the southern portion of where this building was, it's actually a little bit bigger, so.
Okay. Very good, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Of course.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else other further discussions or questions on this item? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, can you call the roll on 24011?
Fears?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 24011 passes, five in favor, zero opposed. This brings us to a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. Mr. Arroyo, please proceed.
A public hearing for the application by Chris Chancellor requesting a rezoning from BP/PUD Business Park/Planned Unit Development and C-2 General Commercial to PB/PUD Business Park/Planned Unit Development and approving a preliminary development plan for the property located at M-78 Highway and Little Blue Parkway. New information only.
Thank you again. This rezoning and preliminary development plan was considered by Planning Commission on the January 23rd meeting as well. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this rezoning and plan. This is a section of the North Point property at the southeast side of Little Blue Parkway that was left C-2 from the original zonings back in 2022. The intent here is to include that portion into the Business Park PUD, which will allow shifting of some of those buildings there to provide more frontage onto Little Blue Parkway, and I have no new information to provide on this.
We'll close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed with 24012, please.
24-012, second reading, and ordinance approving a rezoning from District BP/PUD Business Park/Planned Unit Development and District C-2/PUD General Commercial Planned Unit Development to District BP/PUD Business Park/Planned Unit Development and approving a preliminary development plan for the property located at the Little Blue Parkway, Truman Road and M-78 Highway intersections, second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on 24012.
Fears?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 24012 passes, five in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to our ordinances. Madam City Clerk, could you please read 24007?
24-007, and second reading, and ordinance adopting amendments to the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget, which was approved by ordinance number 19453, second reading.
Any discussion on these items? Okay. Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. 24007 passes, five in favor, zero opposed. Brings us to 24008. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
24008, second reading, and ordinance finding, determining, and declaring the necessity of acquiring general utility easements for the 24 Highway and River Water Main Replacement Project, project number 9749, authorizing the negotiation and eminent domain proceedings if necessary, approving the plans and specifications for the project, authorizing the use of experts as needed, authorizing and directing the execution of documents and the payment of funds to property owners or others holding property rights in conjunction with the project, second reading.
Thank you. Anyone, any discussion or questions on this item? Mr. City Manager, can you just give me just a real quick, brief overview of this in, say, 30 seconds or less, so that folks know what we're talking about here?
Certainly. So, in the area of 24 Highway and River, the city will be proceeding with a water main replacement project. In order to do so, there are some easements that need to be acquired. This gives the city the authority to go negotiate the property acquisition that needs to be done in order to advance that project.
Okay. So we're just talking about easements, there's not gonna be able to lose their home on this thing like that?
Right, correct.
Perfect. Thank you very much for your time. Anyone else other further discussion on this item? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on 24008, please.
Fears?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 24008 passes, five in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 24013. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
24013, second reading, and ordinance authorizing a contract with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services to provide financial assistance for the local public health agency, accreditation assistance grant program for the period of December 1st, 2023 through November 30th, 2024, accepting funds for the period in the amount of $176,000, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and/or time extensions for the same project, and authorizing certain future appropriations, second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on 24013? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Sorry. McCandless?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 24013 passes, five in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to first readings. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
24-014, first reading, and ordinance amending Article 25 of Chapter 18 of the City Code by, by enacting new sections to add requirements for tow services, first reading. 24-015, first reading, and ordinance vacating an existing right-of-way of all that part of Coon Road, beginning at 7 Highway and heading west approximately 631 feet, and reserving the same as a general utility easement, Independence, Jackson County, Missouri, first reading.
Thank you. All right, and that will bring us to Councilmember Comments. Councilmember Stewart, any comments this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have heavy hearts with the loss of Officer Cody Allen. I did not know Cody personally, however, everything I've heard from, about him the last few days, it is obvious being in law enforcement was a calling that he embraced wholeheartedly. He wore the badge, not as a mere job, but as a sacred responsibility. On that tragic day, he responded to a call for service. Officer Allen faced danger head-on. He did not hesitate, he didn't falter. Instead, he rushed to the aid of process server Drexel Mack, who also tragically died that day. Officer Allen's name will forever be remembered in the history of the Independence Police Department, which is a testament to the sacrifice he made. I just want to offer my deepest condolences to the family and friends of Officer Allen, and, as well as Drexel Mack. And that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Fears?
I want to echo the comments made by Councilman and Mayor regarding Cody Allen, Drexel Mack. Just a tragedy in our community, and heartfelt thoughts go out to his family and, and friends, and the police department, who will, will suffer this loss for quite some time. That was one thing I wanted to mention. The other thing I just wanted to mention is that last week was able to go with the Chamber of Commerce down to the, to Jeff City and do some work on behalf of the city and, and talk with some of our elected officials there. Was a worthwhile experience, thought it was really, really good, and we had some good conversations, and hopefully some good things will come out of that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember McCandless?
We've had a lot of tributes to the IPD, but I really have to recognize that they kept their cool and performed with heroism, and were the ultimate professionals in extremely trying circumstances, and managed to take the perpetrator into custody with only minor injuries, which is a miracle by itself. Hats off to FIRE, who showed up to support their colleagues even knowing that there was active gunfire in the area. Often forgotten are the dispatchers, who have to be full partners in the coordination of multiple moving parts, who I think sometimes get forgotten in, in events like this. We thank our partners at AMR for transportation of our colleagues to the hospital. And we also recognize our city partners who came in mutual aid, who showed up with officers and with equipment to support our team. And then if you did not see the honor guard that accompanied Officer Allen's body to the medical examiner, what a testament and tribute to people who love their city and love their colleagues and take good care of each other. I want to also say thank you to Odessa, who welcomed us to their city, as they did a lovely vigil for Officer Allen, while they paid tribute to him. Our deepest condolences to his family, his friends, his colleagues. And on another sad note, we offer our condolences to Deputy Chief Sumstad, who lost her mother Pat this last week, so she had a double loss. We send our love to you as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hobart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, my colleagues are far more eloquent than I, and I agree with everything they've all said. I will add that my heart and all theirs, too, of course, go out to the families of these officers. I grew up as the family, and the fear that I know, that, that the wives and husbands and children have, especially that day and the days following, and right now, is tremendous. So, just know that we love you and, and support you, and are so thankful for all the work that, that every single person at IPD does, very much. And now is, is not the time. And now is, is not the time, uh, for me to say some more of the things I'd really like to say. And I, and I won't, but I will say this. There is nothing okay about what happened. And it saddens me that this is somehow becoming a mindset where we live. Cody Allen is a, is a hero, and so are all the members of IPD and our public safety and frankly, in the city. So thank you very, very much. We lo- we love you all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Yeah, to Deputy Chief Sumstead, uh, the week you've had. And I know when you were, we were talking earlier, and if it's okay for me to share this, you were driving to Minnesota when you kept, found out and heard the news and you said you wanted to turn back. And what a dilemma of life to be faced with going to your mother's funeral or coming back to help your colleagues. And so I hope you're at peace with that decision. In my opinion, you made the right decision. I know there are people that I won't say that helped you out, uh, bringing back, and I think that was very admirable for them to do that. Chief Dustman, you've inspired me to face what you have faced. And we were talking privately. And you said, regardless, we as a society must continue to fight evil. And that inspired me. The other thing that inspired me of that moment was just a very, very touching moment when you were being interviewed right after Officer Allen was killed. And you informed the media. And one of the reporters asked a great question. They said, "Tell me about Cody." And you smiled and lit up. And in that moment of darkness, for you to smile and light up was remarkable because that tells us something about Cody. He would brighten a room in the most incredible darkness, and he did that day in your memory. And I'll never forget your smile that moment. And Mr. City Manager, uh, I just want to give a, a shout out to you and your staff. Incredible job, uh, in an incredibly trying time. And I hope this city doesn't face this again. One of the things that I heard, uh, talking to officers was the memory of Blaze Madrid Evans is just so new and so raw. And many of the officers said, "That scab has not healed." And here we go and we rip it off again. And for your department and for all of you, uh, our deepest condolences. We are here for you. If you need anything, please do not hesitate to call. And I know you've got a gargantuan task this week, and I'll just restate, uh, the public visitation notice. We'll hold a public visitation this Thursday from four to eight P M. And a public memorial service at eleven A M. on Friday, both at the Community of Christ Auditorium to commemorate the life and service of Officer Allen. And with that, I will turn it over to our, Mr. City Manager. And Mr. City Manager, any closing comments or remarks?
Well, I wish we weren't talking about this, but I, I, I greatly appreciate the compassion and the leadership the council has shown these last several days through your words and through your presence. Um, it's been noticed and it's been greatly appreciated. It's, it's not something I wish we were bearing witness to, but the leadership I've seen from Chief Dustman and, and his staff all the way through the department has been nothing short of remarkable. And as their, their hearts remain shattered, um, they've pulled it together in order to have recognition, uh, of the life of Cody Allen that's becoming of, of his accomplishments. And I'm proud of the men and women of the police department and frankly, across our city who, uh, continue to get up every day and do the job, um, that they've been asked to do, uh, to serve our community, um, even though they may not feel like it, but they keep showing up and they keep doing what's asked of them. So, um, it's a, it's a hard time, but it's a time that shows the true character of our staff. And I'm very proud, uh, to work with these fine men and women of the city of Independence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And I do need the City Clerk to just take care of one piece of business, if I could please, on boards of commissions.
A recommendation has been made to reappoint Bobby McCutcheon to the Tourism Commission. Staff requests direction to add a resolution to the next regular meeting, appointing this individual to the above board. Recommendations have also been made to reappoint Aaron Boatwright to the Public Tax Oversight Committee. Staff requests direction to add a resolution to the next regular meeting, appointing this individual to the above board.
Okay. With that, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all.